Eric and Teresa, are you ready at your end?
Yes, we are ready to go. I'm sure that's working.
I am ready. I'm waiting for Erica since she's the one that's controlling the meeting.
I apologize. I apologize. The unmute wasn't...
I will wait for her. Hold on.
The unmute button was not working, but we are already in the boardroom. That doesn't seem to be working.
Erica will be with us moments here. Commissioner, it looks like Erica is now ready according to the chat.
Okay, we will get going.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I would like to start out with a quick reminder to everyone to please keep their microphones off unless they're speaking, so we don't have interference and background noise. And with that, I'm Zan Ojro, Chair, and I will pass the talk introductions to Commissioner Wise.
Morning. Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Hello. Pat Malone, Commissioner, and I'll pass it to Joe.
Good morning. Joe Kirby, Benton County Administrator.
Vance Cronin, County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
And I know we have guests with us, and I'm expecting that we will have comments from the public, so we'll give you all an opportunity to introduce yourselves shortly. I don't have any particular announcements today. I usually do make a land acknowledgement, but today we will have Ahuya White Bear with us and Johanne actually reading a proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Month, so I'm going to defer that to that time. So in terms of comments for the public, I see that Councilman Ma is with us and Nance Kiesling from South Corvallis, and I know there are others as well. Can I please get a sense for how many people are interested in making public comment this morning? If you would put your name in the chat, that would be very helpful. That way, we can have an orderly process, and I can figure out best procedure to go from here. Okay, why don't we begin then with Councilman Ma? And others that wish to speak, please add your name to the chat, and please tell us your name and where you live before you make your presentation. And I'd like to keep the time to three minutes just to keep us on schedule. So thank you very much. Charles?
Yes, thank you for the time to speak. My name is Charles Ma. I am a Corvallis City Councilor for Ward 2. I am also a South Corvallis resident. I live right on Highway 99 in Alexander. And I'm here today to speak to you all regarding concerns over the proposed development of the Criminal Justice Center and jail being proposed in South Corvallis as a possible location. I can speak to you today regarding how South Corvallis has been on the front lines to some of the largest issues over the last couple of years facing Corvallis. We've dealt with floods. We've dealt with some violence. We've dealt with heavy traffic and construction issues, and we've been taking on the majority of the issues surrounding homelessness. However, that's not why I'm here to talk about my concerns. My concerns are more over the other impacts that developing in South Corvallis for this facility could have. First of all, the image for all of Corvallis. Corvallis is continuing to work on being not just a wonderful place to live, but a wonderful place to visit. We have people drive up 99 as a way to get into Corvallis and to enter Corvallis, where we're trying to develop it into a beautiful entrance. And for the first thing you see is, oh, here's our jail on the left. To me, that does not promote a sense of enjoyment or a place to stay and visit in Corvallis. Second concern is the cost to develop in South Corvallis. From my understanding, it's $10 million to $12 million more to develop in South Corvallis. This is taxpayer money, and should be spent wisely. Last of all is access in the case of a severe disaster. The bridges crossing out of South Corvallis into the rest of Corvallis are not scientifically stable to deal with a large-scale natural disaster such as an earthquake or even major floods, which we've had in the past. Locating the Justice Center with Sheriff's Department in South Corvallis would cut them off to the rest of Corvallis in the event of a natural disaster such as those. All of Benton County should be served by this new Justice Center, and locating in South Corvallis does not seem like a good fit. It would benefit Monroe and it'd benefit the residents possibly in South Corvallis, but not the rest of Benton County, such as the Dare Village, Blomis, Kings Valley, and on. So I urge you to reconsider placing this facility in South Corvallis, because it does not seem like a good fit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, this needs to season.
Sorry, real quick. I noticed that Councilor Lytle had to leave. She wanted to testify this morning, but regarding the same thing. Oh, she's still here. Never mind.
Good morning. My name is Nance Kiesling, and I moved to Corvallis in 1969, and I have lived in South Corvallis for the last 28 years. And I am active in my community and very involved in my neighborhood. I was one of the two South Town residents who participated in the July 29 South Corvallis Engagement Zoom Meeting. It was very informative, but not wisely shared. The meeting notifications were confusing, and the subject matter was not clear on the emails, and I think that contributed to the lack of participation, not the lack of interest. This has continued to be a problem for the residents of South Corvallis. Sorry. As a participant in the October 13 Virtual Community Meeting, I was put in a random focus group with 13 West Hills residents along with myself, who is the lone South Towner. Their comments and questions were concerning, and it was very clear that this group would solidly oppose any Justice Center bond that was situated on the West Side. It's clearly a NIMBY situation, and I understand that very well. I understand the sentiment and believe it will be the same strong reaction with South Town residents if the county was to select the South Gateway site. I would agree. I'm opposed to the South Side for all of the reasons that have been previously submitted to the commissioners, as Charles Fong just mentioned. Many of them, and I agree with all. And my neighbors are in agreement. The only option that makes any sense to me is to select the newly or re, I guess, re-brought into the situation site, the North McFadden site. I understand as of the press release on October 29 that the McFadden trust is back in possible negotiation, and I also understand that they're asking top dollar for this property, which is unfortunate. The positive is that the Mental Health Crisis Center has been funded separately, and that opens up approximately $2 to $5 million as per the original plan, from what I can see. So that's a little more money, a little more room. The county desperately needs to pass this bond or levy. I'm not sure what we're calling it. I believe it's a bond. We can get South Corvallis and West Hills neighbors to unite and support the Justice Center if it is located on the North Side. That I've heard clearly, that West Hills kept hammering in north, north, north in those meetings. Okay, so let's get them. Let's get us. Let's get West Hills. Let's unite. We'll support it. We'll work hard in South Corvallis to get the West Hills people in there. Let's unite, and let's get this passed. I don't think the bond has a chance to pass if it is in either of the locations, west or south, if the neighbors are campaigning against it. So I believe the best thing the county can do is bite the bullet, buy the North Side, consider the costs of another failed bond measure, the ever-increasing building cost, which we know as the last to this one, continued jail enhancements, the administrative and consultant fees. We're looking for another site, another however many years down the road, et cetera. There are numerous benefits if we go with the North Side downtown adjacent. The property, basically, I believe, abuts the current City of Corvallis Emergency Services Training Facility. There are minimal residential neighboring properties. I think it's in the city limits already. We wouldn't have to annex it. I don't believe we have the wetland mitigation issues. It's above the 100-year flood plain. There are no faults running under it or close by. So I am strongly, strongly urging that the North Side be brought back into the mix. Seriously, I promise that I will actively support, and I will work hard to bring my neighbors into the mix to support the levy if we can get it as a North Town situation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Lytle?
Good morning, everyone. So I didn't quite prepare anything because it was a council meeting last night, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to share a collective of concerns from South Corvallis neighbors and residents. We had a community meeting, a very impromptu one, Charles and I hosted this past Saturday. And it was just because both of us have been hearing a lot of concerns, questions, and such about the siding of the Justice Center in South Corvallis. So we wanted to have a meeting to get everyone's reactions, everyone's concerns, and basically how people feel about moving forward, next steps. So first off, so I'm basically going to read from a list of concerns for you all today. So first off, no one in South Corvallis is opposed to the needs for the justice system. Everyone is very supportive of the needs for the facilities. They understand that one of the biggest issues is siding and releasing right now. Basically, in your 2019 final report, law enforcement agencies in Benton County extensively use citation and release, which is due to the lack of the capacity of the jail. In 2019, almost 40% of law enforcement agency arrests were cited and released. So basically, a ticket was written, as we all know, in lieu of booking and releasing someone. And the crimes, you know, some of these crimes are drug crimes, above Measure 10, assault fours, assault threes. These are bigger crimes, and we're just writing tickets for them because we're unable to use the jail space. And one of the other things is that failure to appear rates. Basically, judges don't have any tools to use to, in order to... Sorry. But judges don't have that tool to use as a meaningful sanction because of limited jail space. So a lot of people are coming to Corvallis to turn themselves in on warrants and knowing that they don't have to go to court or be adjudicated. So as far as concerns go, one of the largest concerns was that South Corvallis residents feel like public outreach has been minimal towards South Corvallis. As Nance Kiesling brought up, there was a Living South Town meeting on July 29 that only two people showed up to, basically because earlier that week there was a big open house on the transportation system corridor through South 99, and I think that was the day before. So people were going to that, and then the messaging for the meeting wasn't out very clear. Another concern was long-range planning considerations. The South Side needs to be annexed into the city, which requires a vote of city council. The South Side needs to be rezoned from mixed use employment, which is another vote of city council. The other sites don't have these barriers. Four planned neighborhood centers between Southwest Wake Robin and Airport Road, and this would be basically nullifying one of those neighborhood centers. ODOT is currently in the middle of finishing the corridor refinement plan, which is aimed towards safety and slowing traffic through the corridor, which, if we have more traffic volumes and based on CAMPO, they say in the next 20 years, there'll be 33% growth overall in traffic volumes, 50% in employment growth in Benton County. And if there's more volume at the same time, we're doing a planning exercise to slow traffic along the corridor. It just seems a little counterintuitive. Residents shared concerns about economic development and urban renewal being impeded. Residents have several articles showing evidence-based research that correctional facility construction will not spur development or urban renewal development. Ecological concerns, as Charles Ma raised. Right now, there's a mill race project, and one of the identifying factors is the mill race. All the stormwater from Kyger Island north and southwest coming south drains into the mill race, and added facilities will add to that stormwater drainage, which has convergent issues under the highway at southeast Lilly. There's significant wetland mitigation, as the county has cited, added cost to construction between $6 and $8 million. Disaster and emergency preparedness concerns. The bridges aren't scientifically retrofitted if there was a cascade event, floods or flooding events that happen in South Corvallis in peak travel time. So if there's people from all over the county trying to get to the facilities, there's concerns that they're going to have to go very much south to get back to the jail if it's located there. As both Nance and Charles alluded to, there's a lot of concerns about this being our southern gateway. And there has been lots of planning exercises under Living South Town about what residents want to see for their southern gateway. And there's fear that signage with the correctional facility or sheriff's office or courthouse to your left is going to distract people from wanting to stay in South Corvallis. They're going to want to move on through to Greater Corvallis, which is also counterintuitive to a lot of the planning and exercises we are in the middle of. And overall, the concerns about feasibility of the South Side being more to develop than the other sites and also requiring considerations of traffic impact if the county is going to have to put in a two-lane roundabout at Kyger Island and such. So just overall invested feasibility. So those were, and I'm sorry if I went over, those were some of the concerns that were shared this weekend collectively. And we will continue to share those concerns in the next month as we plan to meet weekly. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilor Lytle. Appreciate the comments. And we will keep them all in mind as we continue to make our decisions over the next few weeks. Okay, with that, is there anyone else who wishes to make a brief public comment? If not, we will move on then to review and approve the agenda. We do have a couple of additional items that we will include under other. We will be holding the executive session with respect to real estate under ORS 192.6602E. And that will be, we will remain in executive session and transition to topics covered by ORS 192.6602D and 192.6602H. So look for those under other. At this time, we will move on unless there is anything else my fellow commissioners would like to add to the agenda. Okay, we will move on to work session item 4.1, an update from our Department of Operations Center April Hall and Suzanne Hoffman.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I managed to fry another headset, so I'm just speaking out. Want to make sure you can hear me. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today for a DOC COVID update. And thank you to our OSU colleagues for joining us as well. I'll jump right in. Cases. While statewide, cases continue to decrease as a whole, Benton County is one of many places where our cases remain stubbornly elevated. This high plateau includes an average of 185 cases in the last four weeks per week and 183 in the past eight weeks. So we've been right there at that high plateau for two months now. Our seven-day case rate is 195 per 100,000. CDC calls anything over 100 cases per 100,000 high community transmission. And our 14-day case rate is currently 384 cases per 100,000 over a two-week period. And our previous risk and production framework indicated 200 as extreme risk. So why is this happening? Why do we continue to see so many cases in a plateau? Obviously, the virus continues to find new people to infect. Our cases went from 89 in June to 220 in July, 658 in August, to 750 in September, and 801 in October. So from August, September, and October, we've seen a slowdown in the increase. However, the virus keeps finding those opportunities, and it's taking advantage of them. We're able to track cases among fully vaccinated people, breakthrough cases, and that rate has been steady at about 27% of all of our cases, and it's almost exactly what the state rate is right now as well. So for Benton County, that means that almost 3/4 of our cases come from the almost 1/3 of Benton County population that remains vulnerable due to COVID, due to not being vaccinated. And some of those aren't even vulnerable due to recent infection. So Delta is so infectious, that as long as it finds a new host, it's going to continue to move through our schools, our homes, and spaces where people congregate. Our positivity rate remains good, 4.5%, so we continue to find a lot of the cases. The question I get is when will these cases start to come down? We do expect the cases are going to decrease to a low level, but that decrease is challenged by that really high transmissibility of the Delta variant and many people starting to move indoors. The low levels that modelers were hoping to see around Halloween are now looking like somewhere around Christmas or the New Year to arrive. Modeling from OHSU shows a lengthening to the right side of the downward slope of the wave, indicating a long road down to whatever that new baseline is going to be. That model shows slow decreases until around Christmas time, and that's when we may see an accelerated reduction in cases. And I know I say it every time, and I have for months, but with cases as high as they are, now is really not the time to relax our practices. As we know, winter is a time of increased respiratory viruses as people congregate indoors. Activity really remains high in our K-12 schools. There have been eight outbreaks with more than one case reported just in the last two weeks. And the list is much longer if you look at the last month. We look at a longer, two incubation periods, we monitor an outbreak, and that list is at least twice as long for that time period. So with the high transmissibility of this variant, again, household transmission incredibly common. It's not usual these days to have a case of COVID and not have it affect someone else in your circle. Children aged 5 to 11 who can't yet be vaccinated, due to change, made up 10% of the past month's cases, and they comprise 5% of our county population. So really overrepresented in our cases right now. Youth 12 to 17 who are in school comprise 5% of the population, make about 9% of the cases. And finally, after a really slow start, we are beginning to see an increase of cases among young adults aged 18 to 29, but they are not yet overrepresented as a whole. This age group comprises 30% of the population and 30% of the cases. So we're keeping an eye on that age group. In terms of hospitalizations, they continue to decrease statewide. We're really grateful to see that. Our local hospital had a seven-day average of 13 hospitalized COVID patients. The last time I was with you, it was 17. And yesterday, there were 12 people hospitalized exit Samaritan Regional Medical Center with COVID. Our regional hospital census continues to have... Our regional hospital census continues to have a lot of fluctuation. Yesterday, there were eight out of 87 staff ICU beds available in the region and that's region two, which has Benton, Lincoln, Lynn, Marion, Polk and Yan Hill counties. And for non ICU adult beds, there were 17 out of 569 beds available. Jumping right into vaccination, I haven't really gone over the broad view of vaccination, but I want to share that Benton County is now 67.2% fully vaccinated out of all of our residents. That's, that's really great. You know, while demand slowed for people seeking their first series of vaccination, people continue to come to the vaccination table and we are truly celebrating each one. Our primary focus is providing access and outreach to ensure that all who want vaccination can receive it and to diminish gaps, gaps in vaccination rates among those underserved by our various systems. Pfizer, Moderna and J and J Booster Administration is in full swing. And then today, just before coming to join you here, I started listening into the A C meeting, which is the C D C Advisory Committee meeting, who are right now discussing how vaccine will be administered to children five to 11 and whether it will be recommended for certain groups or all kids five to 11. So that information will be coming soon and it's part of a longer process, but we anticipate by the end of this week or perhaps next week that we will have vaccination eligible for children aged five to 11. The dosing and the packaging is different for this age group. We've ordered our initial doses and so have many of our partners. We expect to get that vaccine soon and we look forward to having it in hand. In terms of vaccination events, our vaccination model includes utilizing our existing network of providers and pharmacies. And it also includes several clinics that aim to fill anticipated gaps between supply and demand while we're meeting our core goals. We had FEMA in town last week for six days of drive-through clinics and five smaller spoke clinics in the community. Now anytime a new partner is brought to Benton County, they are blown away by the eagerness of Benton County residents to be vaccinated and that certainly was the case. The booster clinics were not without delays and bumps, but these were largely resolved within the first few days. And in all, we were able to vaccinate a total of 2,770 people, almost all boosters. We had a handful of first and second doses there. And this included over 2,400 people at the fairgrounds and 335 at those smaller spoke clinics. Now regarding booster vaccination, I want to echo C D C and O H A. I want to stress the following. Boosters do a great job at increasing protection of those who are already vaccinated, but the initial vaccination series continues to provide very good protection. People eligible for boosters should get out there and make an appointment, but just like any medical or pharmacy appointment, there may be a bit of a wait. In other words, providing boosters is important, but it's not as urgent as getting that initial series to people. Early on in our vaccination efforts, we worked hard to engage with providers and pharmacies to build an infrastructure of vaccination in the places where vaccination is normally sought because we knew that eventually vaccination would move to these spaces. Our communications continue to urge people to seek boosters in the medical community at large. Looking ahead, we're adjusting our approach for youth clinics. Many parents will prefer their children to be vaccinated by their pediatrician. Samaritan Health Services, the Corvallis Clinic, our Lynn Benton Community Health Centers and Corvallis Children's Clinic all have ordered pediatric Pfizer and will participate in vaccination of their patients. Our upcoming Benton County Public Health Supported Clinics include several in November and then a repeat in December. So starting the 14th of November, we'll be at Garfield Elementary and we'll have flu as well as COVID vaccination for youth. Then we'll be at Lincoln Elementary all that week in Alcee and Salomis, Monroe, North Albany, and then on the 21st, we'll be at the Boys and Girls Club for, for an event. We're going to be offering very limited booster doses at these clinics. These are going to be primarily first and second those clinics and we expect that they will predominantly, if not all, be by appointment. And so we're going to be working with our community partners to ensure that people have access to scheduling. I kind of ran through that quickly, but that's my update for today. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, April. Pat has a question.
Yeah, April, relatively high case, cases per week. I guess my question has to do with severity and are we getting a lot of kind of light to medium cases hopefully or? Hospital rate seems to be dropping slowly, but I realize Good Sam's a regional facility, so we don't know, I guess we don't know, we know the beds are full, but we don't know where they came from. But so the main question is a high number of cases, but how, how many of those are really serious?
Sure, we do receive a weekly update from, from our local hospital so that we can track the number of Benton County residents who are hospitalized. We know that, for example, just over 70% of our, of our cases currently are, are among unvaccinated people, people who are vulnerable to COVID-19. The age ranges really vary a lot and of course, the older someone is or the more, or if they're immunocompromised, have an underlying condition, the more likely that they are to have serious impact. To answer your question, we are seeing, you know, people continue to have to seek medical care, people having telemedicine visits to consult their doctors. Delta variant, even for people who are vaccinated, isn't, isn't a picnic. People are ill and they are, they're in bed for, for a while usually. Sometimes when we have an increase in cases or a plateau in cases, you know, we know that hospitalizations and deaths always, always follow cases and things can change in any moment. Right now, we have at least one long-term care facility that, that has an outbreak while we hope that we won't see a spike in hospitalizations or any additional deaths. The virus does, you know, has the propensity to do something different in each individual. So right now, not, not a lot of severe and hospitalized cases and we'd like to say that way.
Great, thank you and really appreciate your efforts and you managed to deliver this message with a smile. So I can't wait till we have really good news and see how big your smile gets, but thank you.
I'm excited for those five to 11 year olds to get vaccinated.
It's very exciting news. I think many people are eager for that. Hopefully will change the school rhythm. It has been so challenging for so many families. Okay, are there any other questions for either April or Suzanne? I expect to be sticking around for the next report from our O S U colleagues. We are now joined by Jenny Hoffenreiser and Dan Larson and Steve Clark from O S U. Welcome. Look forward to hearing how things are going at your part of the work.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Hey, thanks for having us come and, and talk with you as you shared, I'm joined by Jenny Hoffenreiser and Steve Clark. I'm going to share a bit about what we are doing at O S U. Jenny will talk about what we're seeing at O S U and Steve will talk about how we continue to work together. And so first, thanks for this opportunity. We are proud of the measures that we have in place and the planning that has taken place at O S U and the partnership that we've had with Benton County Health Department, specifically April, she's just been a phenomenal partner for us. And our planning and partnership is what put us in a, I think, a really good position to welcome staff and students to an in-person experience this fall as our students were expecting and hoping for and their families. So as you know, we're learning to live with this virus and now after five weeks, overall, we're seeing a high, a continued high level of commitment and responsiveness from members of the O S U community. We do have areas that need improvement and we're seeing growing fatigue, as I'm sure you're both seeing and perhaps feeling yourself. But the O S U community is not only a highly vaccinated one, it's a highly vigilant one and we're working hard to keep it that way. Most of our ongoing response, including vaccination compliance, our testing as well as case follow-up falls to our health center team and that's led by Jenny Hoffenreiser and we owe, we owe a lot of appreciation to her and her staff at the, at the health center. They've been feeling the strain of not only COVID response, but now that folks are back, we've got the standard colds and flus and other things that our, our students are experiencing. So we are grateful for her and her team. Now, as I said, O S U's community is highly vaccinated. This is their primary public health measure. We require vaccination for students and employees and of course, with the legally allowable exception. O S U students are at 99.9% compliance with this requirement, with a 93% vaccination rate. We're very, very proud of our students, not just in terms of their, their compliance and in fact, we have just a handful that won't be able to maintain their student status because of that, that 1% of, of compliance. But 93% of our student population fully vaccinated, that's verified. So very proud of that. Our employees are at 98% compliance with 95% reporting to be fully vaccinated. Now with the recent presidential executive order, 14042, if you're interested, requires that all federal contractors and subcontractors have a fully vaccinated workforce. Now, obviously, O S U has a number of federal contracts and we're subcontractors on a number of federal contracts and that requirement is quite broad and so the entire essentially O S U workforce, regardless of where our employees perform their duties, are required to be vaccinated and there is no longer the allowable philosophical exemption. And so this is a bit of a change in terms of what was expected in the previous requirement and that rolls out the compliance by December 8th. So we will have a verified workforce in terms of vaccination as well as less allowable exemptions. Just with our vaccination status alone, again, we feel very proud of the contribution to public health that the O S U community is making. Individuals who are unvaccinated and engaged on the Corvallis and Ben campus are currently required to be tested regularly. We've contracted with Willamette Valley Toxicology, just an incredible outfit and they're providing testing for those that are both required to be tested, but also individuals who voluntarily wish to be tested and we do that right here on the Corvallis campus and we do it on the Ben campus as well. And this measure was primarily put in place in recognition that the arrival of the student population in Corvallis and in Ben has a population impact in those areas. And so we wanted to make sure that those that are most vulnerable to negative health outcomes for, from COVID, that we get in front of any outbreaks with that population, recognizing that our healthcare systems were already stressed. We're going to continue to evaluate the use of testing, particularly for unvaccinated individuals. Of course, we'll continue to work with April as we make any decisions about ongoing testing. We're still doing wastewater testing, the sampling in Corvallis, Ben and Newport. Those results are really helpful for us as an indicator, one of several indicators of prevalence and as well as doing the genomic sequencing, knowing which variant is most prevalent. Obviously, the Delta is the one of, of most prevalent. We've, another measure is we've designated certain events and activities primarily where those who participate in those activities are not O S U employees and therefore they're not required to comply with O S U's vaccination program. We require those participants to show proof of vaccination or recent negative test. Generally, this has been a measure that has been really well received. In fact, more and more event planners are asking that we designate their events. Primarily, we look at the larger events, the events where compliance may be more challenging. Currently, as required by O H A, masks are required indoors as well as outdoors when physical distancing is not being maintained. As the pressure on our healthcare system, local healthcare system reduces and the governor moves to, from requirements to recommendations for face coverings, we're going to evaluate what that means in our environment, not necessarily a foregone conclusion that when mandates are lifted that we won't be using masks as an important measure, particularly in our higher density environment. The last highlight that I want to share is that my colleague, Dave Uofo, who's a COVID coordinator down there, came across a really helpful tool designed by Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. And John Hopkins developed what's called an operational toolkit for higher education institutions to assess risk as well as the readiness to mitigate those risks. We all have risk and how prepared are we to address those risks associated with expanding in-person operations on a university setting. Now, this is the first tool that we've found that really provides a tangible, concrete way of assessing our readiness. It's not, you know, externally verified or independently verified, it's not a formal assessment, but it was really helpful, particularly as we've reported to our board of trustees, how we know that we put in the appropriate measures to mitigate the risk of COVID. So after completing about 80 questions that considered our local public health conditions or policies or public health measures and our ability to adjust our operations, for example, how flexible are we in being able to move to take out only the dying centers that the conditions required it? And answering the questions in a really conservative way, in other words, I selected the most adverse conditions that in terms of what risks might exist. I didn't want to just, you know, give ourselves credit where perhaps we couldn't claim it. And regardless of that, O S U scored as having a very low risk level and being very prepared, being a level of increased readiness to mitigate COVID-19 impact. And this tool didn't actually even have some of the measures that we have put in place, like the required proof of vaccination or the wastewater testing or the required testing of unvaccinated staff and students. So we believe we are doing everything that is appropriate and beyond for helping contribute to the public health in our, our community. Just one indicator, but we felt it was pretty good that we're not missing something big. We'll continue to work with our local public health authorities, our own faculty experts and others to track our response and adjust accordingly as we've done all along. As I said, we're learning to live with the virus. We have positive cases in our community and we expect that that's going to continue to happen. We have protocols in place to notify, quarantine, isolate, provide care. Jenny will give a brief update on what we're seeing and how we're doing that. And finally, as we continue to work closely with, with all of you, with Samaritan Health Services, with others in the community, we want to spend a little time exploring, if we have time, what that could look like as well as answering any questions that you have. So this time, I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Thank you, Dan. People able to hear me okay? Yeah, thumbs up, great, thank you. My name is Jenny Hoffenreiser. I serve as the Executive Director of Student Health Services here, also an Associate Vice Provost with Dan Larson in kind of leading health and wellbeing, which is Provost with Dan Larson, in kind of leading health and wellbeing, which is a core foundational mission at Oregon State, at the institutional level, but certainly within student affairs, which our aim is, you know, to help students succeed in health and wellbeing, of course, being foundational to that success. So this is really mission-driven and purpose-driven work. First of all, I want to acknowledge the incredible partnership we have with Benton County Public Health. This has been gold star for my experience here in the past eight years, April's leadership and Suzanne's leadership. We can't do this as an institution, we have to do this as a community. OSU is obviously a large portion of the local community and that collaboration and partnership and co-thinking. Pandemics are not cookie cutter recipe. We have to be flexible, we have to be responsive and this rolled up so quickly and under Dan's leadership, I think we have connected with you at different times. We're building spaceships as we're flying spaceships, you know, drafting policies and creating up systems and shaping our settings to be adaptive. We're excited now to have the students back on campus. Thank you, the vaccine and the hard work of Oregon to get a lot of folks vaccinated. That's, as Dan mentioned, that's our number one tool. Also want to acknowledge Gerald Dyer, who we work very closely with. Before you can remind me of his title, but he sort of oversees the case investigation work. And part of the contributions for Student Health Services that we have, as Dan mentioned, been extremely busy. Students are back, students have a lot of things other than COVID. What we have been seeing, and this might be reflected outwardly as well, people coming back, living in congregate settings, there will be infectious disease. So we're seeing a lot, a lot of infectious, oh, thank you, communicable disease program manager, thank you. Yeah, Gerald is talking about a commitment to that work. So what we are seeing is a lot of respiratory illness, which we would see in any fall. This is why flu vaccines are such an important thing. So plug on the flu vaccines, the COVID vaccines. I want to call out the testing. One contribution from Student Health is we're coordinating, as Dan mentioned, with Willamette Toxicology. I got their last number as of this week. They've given almost 8,800 tests on the OSU campus. We have two walk-in testing sites for asymptomatic and this is for the required testing that Dan mentioned. If you're not fully vaccinated, you're required to be tested weekly. And we're seeing an increasing number of fully vaccinated who may have been exposed, they're not symptomatic, but they're just want to double check. They want to have that weekly testing just for their peace of mind. So Willamette Toxicology has been tremendous in scaling up testing that is onsite, so no disruptions, you don't have to go anywhere, people in their busy day can walk into one of these centers. And those results are coming back very quickly, sometimes within 24 hours. So we're able to respond very quickly. Student Health continues to see the symptomatic students. We don't want people with symptoms going into these spaces. So again, most of the cases that we're seeing, the testing we're doing are not COVID, they're respiratory illness. They still need to isolate. So that goes without saying, anybody who's got symptoms now needs to isolate, whether it's COVID or not COVID, trying to keep symptomatic people. That's been a key element of this leadership team that Dan leads, is to ensure that our faculty are set up so that students who are symptomatic with or without COVID, they don't need to come to class, they can progress. They're academics either remotely, on Zoom. We're equipped to support students in isolation or quarantine. Interestingly, I just found out, we've only, we work very, very closely with housing and our group life. The congregate living are the areas that we focus most attention on because that's the biggest opportunity for an outbreak. We've only had one quarantine student since so far this term, which just points to the high vaccination rates that we have. And so far, we have isolated about 40 students, the students who tested positive, quarantined, housing is organized, isolation space. A number of students will choose to go home and spend their 10 days plus additional time at home. Let's see, the other big contribution is the contact tracing. Again, this is in deep collaboration with Benton County. We've got a team, so any positive student case, our team actually, we will contact them, work through the contact tracing with those individuals. We can't rely on Benton County to manage all of this for the OSU population. So that's a busy operation, identifying those post contacts, notifying the post contacts, getting people into isolation, quarantines, that we have a whole team. Our medical leadership are the ordering physicians for Willamette Toxicology, so any of the student positive cases that we hear from Willamette Toxicology come directly to us. So we're able to respond immediately to help those students get isolated and quarantined. Just trying to think of other highlights. The other function that we're providing is consultation with classroom notifications, so positive cases in a classroom, positive cases in a workplace. We've got trained staff, Student Health is working with those classrooms and helping to manage that without having to cancel classes if there are single cases, identifying or organizing notifications to labs or fieldwork or areas that might be at higher risk. So overall, it's a very comprehensive strategic approach to isolate and contain. And otherwise, educate and get people, and Dan has said this a couple of times, get people acclimated to living with COVID. We talk a lot about moving from the pandemic to an endemic where we can actually start approaching this, you know, with regular vaccinations, the boosters, the third doses, how we will resume our lives with COVID without the significant disruptions to student learning, student housing. It's critical for the wellbeing of our students to be here, engaging in their communities and participating hands-on. I had a personal thanks delivered by one of the department deans at how meaningful it was for that faculty member to be back in front of a class, teaching and engaging students. I would say face-to-face, we'll say mask-to-mask because the compliance rates in our classroom settings are very high for mask-wearing. That's been one of our big surprises. But having people back in person in a community is what we need to achieve the academic mission and to the full development of these young adults. So we're grateful for the collaboration, we're certainly grateful for the vaccine and the continued efforts with the community and the leadership to set up the conditions so that we can be back on site. Steve, we can open it up for questions. If Steve has some final.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just very briefly, I'm sure you're all interested in whether OSU's enrollment is looking like students, both on undergraduate and graduate degree program are very interested in continuing their higher education and at Oregon State University. Our Corvallis enrollment will be up a tad this year, about less than half of 1% overall. Our overall enrollment will be up about 3% with about 800 more students enrolled in our online e-campus courses, both undergraduate and graduate throughout the world. Throughout the pandemic, the university has not only addressed the COVID-19, it's a virus, but also its impact on the university community, the community statewide. Statewide, we've done this through our research efforts and the work of OSU Extension. Within the university community, you've heard from Dan and Jenny about what we've done to address the virus, but as an employer, we've also sought and as a community member to extend a culture of care within our university community of students, faculty and staff. We've sought not only to provide for the return to in-person and onsite learning, but also to understand what effects the virus has had and pandemic has had on people, whether working parents, the school-aged students, employers, employees caring for parents or compromised family members, employees' own personal needs, students who not only go to school but work as employees at the university or in the community, and also some of who have their own childcare needs, and of course, those affected by limited financial means. Dan, Jenny has shared with you not only what we've done, but the communications we've engaged in and flexibility we've engaged in. Our culture of care really extends to probably what the county and other employers are doing, but needs to be extended further to other employers in Benton County and beyond. And that's flexible work opportunities and considerations due to personal, own personal healthcare concerns. At OSU, we seek to address those accommodations through our Office of Equal Opportunity and Access, through remote working agreements, we're offering individual employees the opportunities to discuss with their supervisors how they might actually complete their mission as an employee, their service to the university, by having some flexibility in their work location. We call these remote work agreements and an individual might work two to three days onsite and two days or reciprocal a member offsite. These are specific agreements, they're reviewed, approved and then centrally processed by HR and they'll be revisited each term throughout the year. Flexibility of work locations, but one accommodation. We do look for other terms of flexibility and work-life balance and this fall, we're undertaking a task force review of the future of work. It'll be a creative look at how we can not only do to the COVID-19 pandemic, but other requirements to employ remote, in some cases innovative work opportunities and practices to be the best employer we can be and continue to serve our students, faculty and staff in the state of Oregon effectively. In closing, let me offer a challenge to each of us and given that we're talking to the Commission, I'd ask the Commissioners and Joe to think about this first, but we'll send that same message to the Chamber of Commerce, to the City of Corvallis and others. I think we are at a point that we need to further identify what gaps continue to exist as we progress through the pandemic into an endemic. We need to explore those gaps and determine what needs and opportunities, not just limitations, but opportunities that we have before us and how to address them. We need to determine how we can do this together, whether it's the county and the university, the City of Corvallis, the City of Plowman or others with the county and the university. Some of this work is already underway, but I think it needs to progress to include other community members, businesses and organizations. By identifying what priority needs, gaps and opportunities exist, we can then think about who specifically will be engaged in what. Some of that work can be around crisis mental health that Bush Ogero and others are leading and then determine not only what specific area needs engagement, but who specifically will be involved and what resources some of those possibly federal COVID-19 relief funds that can be utilized. Obviously, there's a lot to do. We heard about the issue of the jail earlier today, the Justice Service Center, that's the one issue. What are the other priority needs, gaps and opportunities? And let's assess them together, let's address them together and the university is willing to participate in that effort. Thanks to each of you and thanks certainly to the incredible work of the Benton County Health Department. April, Suzanne and others are just remarkable. I know we've used the bar half an hour, but if there's enough questions you might pose, we're happy to respond as best we can.
Thank you, Steve and team. That's very helpful. I would like to just make a couple of comments and then open the floor to my fellow Commissioners and to Joe and Uofo and Suzanne. I would say that on your final note of what can we do together to emerge more resilience and a stronger as a community coming out of COVID-19, I would add both childcare, early childhood education and housing, especially affordable workforce housing to that list. I know that you all must feel it at least as much as we do, given your employee base, but both issues are really challenging, especially to younger faculty members, younger employees, trying to find a foothold here in our Benton County community. So we have a lot of work to do in those arenas. Lastly, I wanted to mention that when we invited you today, we've had discussions about bringing you all to join us at our board meetings periodically because we have issues in common and it's wonderful to be able to discuss them as a group. But I think it was also prompted in part by many of us Beaver fans watching games and watching the number of unmasked young people and not so young people in the stands despite our best attempts to get people to wear masks at outdoor events over a certain size. And I would have to say that it doesn't appear that those large events caused any significant uptick in COVID disease and I'm very grateful for that. But I do want to acknowledge that that was one of the reasons that we invited you to this meeting and it hasn't been brought up yet today. Thanks.
Sure, we share an interest in minimizing spread of COVID-19 and why this university, along with University of Oregon, the Timbers and others implemented really national-leading efforts to require proof of vaccination or a recent negative test. The good news is that OHA staff and administrators have attested to this, that as you said, that we've not seen issues associated with athletic events across the nation. I wish there was as much attention as we've placed on it in Oregon and certainly Oregon State. But this effort is not just about athletics events, it's other designated events and not just football, but other athletic events and designated events. We'll continue to work very hard, but knowing that as Dan offered, that the, those entering the Research Stadium are at near 100% levels of compliance and vaccination rates approaching 95 to 97%, we take comfort and we wish and we will continue to exhort people to observe face coverings while not, and I'll say the mantra, actively eating or drinking. It doesn't go without saying that it isn't just students. There are many of those who spectate at OSU or other events that are older like me that don't behave at all times.
Understood. And I'm just very grateful for the level of precaution that most people in our community take and they're reasonable in their approaches and just like that, we're at a high plateau. So we'll just continue to be careful as we can. And thank you. Are there questions from my fellow Commissioners? Commissioner?
Hello. It's great to see everybody, Steve and Jenny and Dan. I got to see Steve a few weeks ago and Jenny, I'm not sure you and I have ever actually met in person. And Dan, I feel like it's been forever since I've seen you. So thank you very much for coming today. Steve, I really liked what you said about identifying the gaps and working together and I'm very thankful that OSU and Benton County have such a good relationship and partnership. So we talked about the mask-wearing a little bit. You know, you mentioned that OHA has said that they have not seen issues with events and the lack of mask-wearing. Is it, are we leaving it at that or are there any other steps that we're taking to address the concern?
Direct up to Dan and let me just write a summary after he finishes.
Yeah, our athletic department is obviously as concerned as we are and our community is about compliance. The challenge is how, you know, if you're drinking or eating, you cannot wear a mask if you are not, you have to wear a mask and that kind of in-between, it's just really, really challenging and also the peer accountability. So of course, reinforcing messages, using staff in ways that can reinforce the requirements is the primary response from athletics to try and increase compliance. The, Jenny could probably speak to this a bit more is, you know, we The, Jenny could probably speak to this a bit more is, you know, we recognize, and even our, I think our health authorities recognize, that you have to combine multiple measures in place to recognize that in some situations, you're going to have lower levels of compliance with one measure than you might have with another measure. And so everything that we do at OSU is in recognition. You may have heard it, you know, it's the Swiss cheese sort of thing, where you just want to stack slices of Swiss cheese, recognizing that we may be less successful in one measure than another. But fortunately, there's others that fill that gap, and I think that's what maybe we're seeing in terms of not a significant increase or an increase in case prevalence as a result of these outdoor activities. Interestingly, football events across the country even that don't have mask mandates and don't have vaccine, proof of vaccination requirements are also not seeing increase in cases. I'm not speaking generally, but it's, that's interesting. And compliance, it's still really frustrating when people don't comply with very basic expectations.
Yeah, Dan, I'll just add a little bit to that. There is a group that meets weekly, the OSU Athletics Team meets with Lane County, the U of O Athletic, and the Public Health Room, Lane County. They have the same issue. I think this is one of those things where there's such a culture at games, and you factor in the media, the media will focus in on those who are not wearing a mask, the media, the Jumbotron will focus on those spaces that are painted and cheering. So there's a broader kind of social aspect to this, that, you know, it's difficult to go in there and just, you know, there's a police policing every individual wearing masks in that setting where they are eating and drinking. So I think this is, it's one that is an ongoing conversation, but it's not just us. And this is, you know, Oregon has the higher level of protection with the outdoor face covering. So if the Beavers are out of state, they don't have these. If they're here, they do. So there's, this is the variability and the broader social context of this, I think, is another consideration. But it's a constant, you know, point of conversation, and there isn't anyone in there that doesn't know this. It's just a matter of, there's some social norm issues. We're certainly more hopeful about indoor, you know, indoors, which is a different setting than the outdoors. But appreciate the concerns, appreciate, you know, we don't like to have policies. We have this with tobacco policies. It took a while for that to get become a norm within those environments when you're outdoors and people feel, and generally speaking, at least for the students, they're generally next to their peers, you know, their next friends, and their bubbles, their cohorts. So there's a number of factors here, but it has been an ongoing conversation between OSU and U of O in particular, with variable results on both ends.
Thank you. Can I just ask a clarifying question? I was under the impression that in order to get into a sporting event, you show that you're either vaccinated or that you've had a negative test within three days. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any exemptions? I mean, is that for everyone? Are kids exempt from that?
If you aren't eligible to receive a vaccination, you are exempt from having to show proof of vaccination or the negative test.
Okay. I was wondering, because I took my kids to a volleyball game last Friday. It was a really fun time, but we were all prepared with their negative tests, and they said, oh, nope, you don't need them. So just good to know. Thank you.
And thanks for wearing your mask at the game.
I did, 100%.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, a couple things. I'll go along with the mask theme, the indoor requirement. And my free advice would be when, maybe after the first of the year, when things look better to go slow in repealing that requirement. I just think back to late June last year, and the reports were pretty positive, and happy days are here again, and that lasted a few weeks. And so we went from, you don't have to wear masks anymore, and people were thrilled, and I think it just makes sense to, especially get through the winter. And one of you mentioned the tobacco example. It takes a while for people to adjust to a new requirement or new rules, and I just think that it makes sense to keep them in place maybe a little longer than absolutely required, but because, oh, I forget who mentioned it, but maybe that was, I lost the thought there. The other thing, I'll point this to Steve. You should be jumping, you should get up on your desk and shout vaccination rates, and there you go. I was going to say, well, maybe not literally, but don't be shy. Those are great numbers, and it, the word "community" was used quite a bit during this conversation, and I think that's really important there. Last time I checked, there was not a moat around, "OSU, you are an important part of the community." And I really appreciate how I think of the conversations, August, August and September of '22, and a lot of concerns about students coming back. And I think, oh, this was what I was, I think Jenny mentioned, building a rocket ship as you're flying, and we've all been doing that for over a year and a half, and it's, that hasn't changed. We don't, we don't quite know what's around the corner, and, but I appreciate the community concepts here that have been mentioned regularly. So, Dan, really appreciate getting an update on, especially now that school started, what's going on on campus. So thank you for that.
Commissioners, we appreciate each of you and your thoughtfulness and service to all of Benton County and certainly Oregon State. Each of us is very serious and are listening to what you all have to say, Commissioner Ogero, in terms of being mindful, continually mindful of athletic events and Commissioner Pat, as regards staying the course. I was very serious about saying we should specifically address these needs, opportunities, and gaps, and provide for individuals and collective to identify things that we missed and should address, while maintaining a steady hand on the till of COVID-19. So we will be with you as a member of the community and would enjoy working on specific items with you, including housing availability for the workforce and for others in need. We're there with you, so we're ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Dan?
Sorry, I was actually waving goodbye. I have to.
It's hard to tell these days, so, great, appreciate it. Okay. There are lots of things we could talk about, but we are finished participating on this subject. And it's reassuring, of course, to hear from Oregon State University and the layer of protection and mitigation that you all are doing to live with a pandemic, move us towards the endemic mode. Hopefully, there won't be new variants until soon. I'm really glad to hear you're still doing the genomics of wastewater in Oregon to track what's coming and what's here. So with that, I think I will move us on to our next item and just to say thank you once Okay. Our next item of business is discussion regarding amending Benton County Code, Chapter 31, which is enforcement. And we have with us Gordon Kirks and Greg Barret from Public Works and Community Development perspective. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is a joint effort between Community Development and Public Works, with involvement from other staff as well. I'll start it off and hand it over to Gordon. The code enforcement chapter of the county code is utilized by Community Development for planning and building-related code enforcement issues, can also be utilized for other types of code enforcement. The amendments that we want to discuss with you today are two elements in the code, and the impetus for it is our stormwater permitting, our stormwater permit through the state, which Gordon will explain in more detail. And then I will walk you through the proposed amendments. So I'll hand it over to Gordon to discuss the why we are doing this now part of things. So, and you're muted, Gordon?
There we go. So I, we are in the midst of our NPDS permit compliance process. The NPDS is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It's a mandate that is related to, comes from the federal government through EPA to DEQ and then is handed to us basically for stormwater quality and public outreach. And there are six control measures involved in the, in our compliance efforts. A new permit was issued in 2019, and we have complied with the requirements for two of those control measures. We're working on another two, which are due to be implemented by the end of February 2022. And there are another two control measures due the following year, in 2023. The two this year have to do with how we manage our facilities and how we manage illicit discharges or non-stormwater discharges through either our conveyances, our very few conveyance systems that the county has, or through direct channelization into streams and rivers and lakes and wetlands. So the illicit discharge code, which is covered in Chapter 36 of the Benton County Code, it comes with requirements from the, from DEQs that we establish an escalating enforcement system. And that escalating enforcement system is basically, you know, tell the guy in the field something's wrong, document it at home, then send them a letter if they refuse to comply, then tell them to comply. If they refuse to comply, then, there are five stages of this escalation, which end up with fines at the end of it. The logic behind this is that you give, you give permities the greatest opportunity to comply using what I would consider a non-monetary, non-monetary incentive. So we needed to then, we're going to have to modify the non-stormwater discharge code, but first, we wanted to modify the enforcement code that supports it. When we went to, when we started considering that, we, in my conversations with Rebecca Taylor, who's recently left us with Greg, it seemed logical that the enforcement coach should sort of apply across county, and that it be located at one place, that it be centralized, and that it be homogenized so that everybody could use it if necessary. And so this escalating enforcement code just kind of augments the existing Chapter 31 to make it, I think, to make it more streamlined, to make it more homogeneous, and make it more generally applicable across the board for county concerns. Greg, does that cover it, do you think?
Yeah, thanks for that background, Gordon, on why we're doing this and how it relates to our stormwater program. Commissioners, I can lead you through an overview of those proposed amendments, if that makes sense at this point. I believe in your packet, they starting on page 15, that's where we start the amendments to Chapter 31. And we expanded the numbers or the people, the positions identified as enforcement officers, people who can take action under this discode. And then moving down to 31.020, that's the escalating enforcement response procedure that Gordon was just describing. And so it lays out in A through E a five-step process where you can start with simply a verbal notice of violation, like Gordon was describing, you're out doing an inspection of, say, their erosion and sediment control, mitigation measures, and something's in violation. You could notify them that they're in violation verbally, then follow that up with a written notice of violation. If neither of those actions cause compliance, then you can go to a formal written notice to comply, and that actually then can lead into more formal and punitive measures if necessary. We always try to resolve compliance issues at the lowest possible level, the most level of cooperation and least amount of headache and financial impact for everybody. But if necessary, we can move up through step four and step five, which can include suspension of permits and fines and issuance of citations and other legal mechanisms. So that is the five-step process. We've written in flexibility within that so that you don't, if it's a egregious violation, you don't have to start at step one, you can start at a higher step. So I think we've built in adequate flexibility, and we've worked with county council to ensure that this makes sense from his perspective as well. So that's an overview of the escalating enforcement process. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Malone?
I was just curious how, is this a common occurrence or pretty rare that you would have to deal with violations?
Well, in terms of stormwater, it's been pretty rare, pretty infrequent, and we're hoping that continues to be the case. In terms of land use and building code, it's much more frequent. I mean, it's not like hundreds a month by any stretch, but, you know, we do, a few every month come up.
Thank you.
Sure. The other main part of the amendments is on page, I think it's 23 of your packet. And this is really just adding a tool to our toolbox of ways to gain compliance, again, in the most effective, most cooperative, quickest, easiest manner, rather than having to go to court for every case. And this is called the voluntary compliance agreement. And I did, I did note an error just as I was looking at this this morning preparing. 31.505, that number is repeated. So we have that as the voluntary compliance agreement, and then it's the next section of private right of action. So we'll correct that in the ordinance before it comes to you. But the voluntary compliance agreement is essentially a way outside of the, excuse me, outside of the me, outside of the citations and fines and all of that process. It's just a way for the county and the person who has the violation on their property to enter into an agreement that layouts, lays out what needs to happen, by when, milestones along the way, excuse me, and, and just is a simpler way, rather than going through legal processes and requirements, to ensure progress and have something that is, that the property owner is, is held to. So if they fail to meet the voluntary compliance agreement, that in itself is a, is a potential violation. And this has worked well in certain other jurisdictions. I think we modeled this off of Multnomah County, but I think it's used in other areas as well. And so it's not required for our NPDS process. This is really just separate. It's something that Rebecca and I had been wanting to add into the code for a while. And so this is the opportunity to do that. So any questions on that process?
Greg and Gordon, to me, it seems that this is also really an opportunity to codify our typical practices and because it doesn't look dramatically different from the way we operate now, but it's clear that our standard operating procedures weren't reflected necessarily in code. So I'm glad to see this, these changes being brought to us so that we are much clearer and have a legal basis for our approach.
Yes, thank you. Agreed. It does codify a lot of our approach and process.
I should, I should mention also that the, that once this is in place, it will also facilitate our ability to change one of our internal policies about reporting and process for staff to follow as well. You know, so this will be supported by internal policies once we've got it codified. And that's something that it was in need of update as well, and one of those things that will be part of our, our final compliance at the end of February. I guess also I should use this opportunity to give you guys a head, a heads up that modifications to Chapter 36 are coming and so that will come in January and February sometime.
And I guess we should also give County Council, Vance Carney, an opportunity to weigh in if he has anything to add to this.
I, I don't, I think Greg covered it pretty succinctly and thoroughly. I will note that this is something Rebecca Taylor started initially. We didn't, it kind of went, it's a start for maybe a year or so, so kudos to Gordon and Greg, we finally came into.
It's been a team effort, for sure. Thanks, Vance. All right. So I, this, oh, sorry.
Commissioner, no, I have a question.
Sorry, no question. I just see there's a motion in the packet that I would be willing to make, but if Greg, did you want to say something else first? Okay. I move to direct staff to bring the proposed amendments to County, County Code, Chapter 31 enforcement to a public hearing for potential adoption.
Do I have a second?
Uh, second, should we put the November 16th date in the?
No. We've been talking about the fact that we are not going to schedule a hearing on 16th, correct?
Oh, okay. That's right. Okay. Just a, just a plain old second then.
Then we shall move on and I will call for the vote. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Yep. It's going to be an iterative process. Okay. I would like to propose a five-minute break before we turn to the Justice Systems Improvement Program. And Nick, we'll be back at about 10:40. Stop speaking, please keep your microphone off so we can minimize feedback as we move forward. We are now at item 4.4 on our agenda, discussion and update on Justice System Improvement Program. And with us is Nick Kurz from his working vacation, hopefully mostly vacation.
Okay. Well, thank you, commissioners. Apologize for the more casual attire than usual, however, I will point out that as I am, as I'm dressed in Packers Green, I can ultimately attend the wedding or go to church quite appropriately. So with that, let me get started here. Actually, if I could share my screen real quickly, I'd like to just pull up a quick review of our timeline for you as well as anybody else that may be listening in today. And thank you. Let's make sure I get the right one here. All right, there we go. So just as, for review for the commissioners, we're sitting at here on November 2nd today. We have a decision point relative to the proposed South site on 11/30, November 30th. I have invited Gary Pun to attend our session on 11/16 to talk a little bit about, about that property. And so whether that's, that's here or an executive session, that determination hasn't been made, but just to have Gary weigh in with a little bit of information that may help in terms of making a decision or not. And then again on 12, or 12, your 12/14 meeting, December 14th, we have really a final decision point relative to the proposed West site. So I think these dates are familiar with you, but wanted to share them to ground us all and, and for anybody's benefit and maybe listening in today. And I'm going to stop sharing now. With, with that, I have asked Alyssa Rash to share the press release that went out on Friday relative to the North property that we were evaluating earlier this year and are reevaluating now. And so with that, I'll pass it over to Alyssa and she can also comment on where we believe the Gazette Times may be with, with this information and any other public comment to this point. Go ahead, Alyssa.
Thank you, Nick. Good morning, commissioners. I'm meeting with Dr. Kirby. As you do not know me, my name is Alyssa Rash. I usually call you N, S, E, and R. And I am the Benton County Public Information Officer. Commissioners, this press release should be familiar to you. Allow me to open it for just a moment. This is the press release that I think we were reviewing mid last week. And this is really a press release that's got a deferment of the site function decision to the Michigan Press Release Committee, Commissioner's meeting, as well as an acknowledgement of exploratory discussions regarding the McFadden Ranch LLC property. So with that, this press release was sent approximately noon on, oh, I'm sorry, Erica says I'm having some audio distortion.
Okay. Commissioner, can you hear me?
Left four clearly, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. I apologize for that. Like April, I burned through headsets, like, like bonkers. Okay. So this press release was sent at approximately noon on Friday, October 29th. You'll see it says 12:04, that's because our system takes a little while to batch send emails, but it went out at about noon. And as we look at who opened the press release, we see about 18 people opened it. And as I review that list, I do not see, I do not see the Gazette Times, but I do see that another local paper, The Corvallis Advocate, has opened the press release. As, as I reviewed both sites this morning, there is a story in The Corvallis Advocate summarizing the press release. There is not a story in The Gazette Times at this point. Nick and I have both been in contact with the Gazette Times reporter that primarily reports on the Justice System Improvement Program, Jim Day, just to make sure that he is aware of the press release, but I don't believe that he saw it until yesterday afternoon. So I think there's a possibility that a story is forthcoming, but we have not received public comments regarding the deferment of the decision or our acknowledgment of engaging in exploratory discussions on the North site at this point in time. Nick, is there anything else you'd like me to share about this?
Nope, that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But given the public comment this morning with South Corvallis folks, who did refer to the press release, it's out there, it's not out there on the news media.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would also like to acknowledge that when we send a press release, it's always posted to our website. And with this particular press release, because I knew about the interest that our community had in this particular board decision, I linked it as well on the Justice System Improvement Program webpage.
If there are additional questions or comments from the commissioners, then I will move on. Pass?
Yeah, just, I was disappointed that Jim Day's article about- Yeah, just, I was disappointed that Jim Day's article about this project came out, I guess, a day before the press release and apparently didn't care that much. He had his story, even though there was significant new information pending. So that was a little disappointing, just showing how difficult it is to get people's attention. And with all the, I don't know if it's hundreds yet, but emails on this subject to show that we listened and were keeping our options open, just and to have, I guess, to have no comment or not much of a comment on, oh, well, thank you for paying attention or looking more broadly than we thought that you were. But I guess we can put our best effort and that's, that's all we can do. But appreciate getting that information out.
Thank you, Commissioner. As we're all aware that our news media works on very tight deadlines, and while we did make sure that Mr. Day was aware of our forthcoming release, as he mentioned, it sounds like he had the story that he needed at the time. And so I'm working closely with him to try and get our news broadcasted as well as possible. But as always, we don't exclusively rely on our newspapers and other media partners. We do work hard to amplify our own message using our website, social media, and any other means that we can. And I'm always open to suggestions on that front. So thank you.
Yeah, in this case, I will, I will say I think we made every effort to alert Jim Day to the forthcoming announcement. He did not see, clearly did not see Alyssa's preemptive email. And in fact, it wasn't until I, he and I had an exchange on Monday, you know, and I just, I just put in, did you notice the press release? And then he wrote back and said, no. So everything, yeah, in spite of our best efforts, that that timing just did not align. But we'll try and, try and be even more vocal in the future and moving forward. All right. I really only have one other agenda item that I wanted to discuss with you this morning, and that's relative to the email that I sent yesterday regarding the new courthouse. I do want the courthouse, the new courthouse, to be on your radar and some of the considerations that we as a county will, will have to evaluate relative to changing our bond date, both the current change to November and if we do entertain extending it to May of the following year. Certainly, I don't want to, and it was not my intention, to commit us to a path forward relative to potentially self funding our matching funds. But I do think that's an important option to explore. And as I indicated to that extent, Rick Crager and Mary Ottley are looking into our ability to self-fund, whether that's, you know, just for a minimal number of years or even, you know, a year or two until we can reimburse ourselves, or whether that's, you know, for the full length of the lending. But I, the other item, the other item option we need to explore is, you know, what adjustments that the state might make. And so that's, that's part of our due diligence here as well. I will say that, you know, the schedule as it is currently proposed was built around, you know, a single phase of, or a single appropriation of 20.4 million. And that was all based on getting the new courthouse essentially built before the end of the next biennium. And so worth asking the question to the state, you know, what are the implications if our bond date moves? But my experience in working with OJD and ADAS is that in the event you span multiple bienniums, then you, the protocol is to phase the allocation by biennium. So I'm not saying that an exception couldn't be made or that there isn't other opportunity. I'm just saying that's what I, I know through my, you know, discussions. And well, it went beyond discussions. We were actually crafting the, the funding agreement as we submitted our final request to the, to the state. So at this point, I think my intent is to come back in two weeks, also on the 16th, with kind of an analysis of our, extended, extended analysis of moving our bond date. I think this is, this will be part of that discussion. But I want it to be on your radar because we may have to, we may have to take action, both administratively as well as, I guess I would say, on the political front with our representatives. I think one of my primary concerns is that, you know, following that inquiry I had from Shelley Bochar Davis's office prior to my leaving, there's obviously awareness about, you know, the public input on site. And, you know, is there a site for the new courthouse? And are dates moving? And so my, you know, my, my big concern on the political side is that we want to assure the state and our representatives that we can, you know, move the new courthouse through with the, with the CCCNI funding that we're anticipating, or, you know, have, have an alternative plan, but, but not lose, not lose our opportunity in the funding here.
Thank you. You know, in my experience with this funding to date and watching the experiences of Lane County, Blackamis County, and the first county to go using this funding, Multnomah, the state has been very flexible and very supportive of working to make it feasible for the counties to continue to receive those state dollars for courthouse matching. So I think that as long as we are clear in our needs and our timelines, we should probably be fine. I did reach out to both Rep. Bochar Davis and to Rep. Ray Field. And I will be speaking to Rep. Bochar Davis and her staff later this fall and have a meeting set up with Rep. Ray Field. So it's important, as you say, to keep them in the loop. And I think that as long as we're communicating, we should be fine. So I'm grateful, though, for the planning and the consideration of alternative funding mechanisms so that we can stick as close as possible to original schedule. I think that will be helpful for everyone.
Thank you for that insight, Commissioner. There is, the surety of the funding aside, there is also the question of how we wish to proceed and on what timeline. And by that, I mean, and so that's why I want to keep this on the table as well. You know, we, we may decide it is in our best interest to move forward with the new courthouse on the timeline that we propose, even, even if we knew we could, you know, defer it. And so that's a discussion we haven't had, and I want to have it with all of you as well. So it's, it's not, there's both a funding component and sort of a more practical and maybe bond measure component as well. And so hoping we can, we can continue this discussion relative to both of those considerations. Questions? Pat?
Yeah, by, by funding, do you mean the state dollars?
I do, yes. With state matching funds. So there, as Commissioner Liza has implied, there may be opportunity to, to phase the CCCNI funding over multiple biennium, which would mean you'd get some dollars in 2023. Likely, it would be enough for design and initial construction. And then you'd get the remainder of the dollars in 2025. That would be the next bond sale. It doesn't mean you'd have to wait. You would be, you'd have to self-fund yourself until you got those dollars in 2025. Alternatively, you know, we could decide to move forward, self-funding our, our match, knowing that we have a bond measure coming up, hoping that we are able to reimburse ourselves for some or all of that night. But essentially, moving the program along potentially more, the new courthouse along potentially more quickly. So we kind of have an opportunity here to be, you know, masters of our own fate. We just have to decide how we want to do it and on what timeline.
Nick, I'd just like to add real quick that I would characterize it as this, commissioners, it's really the exploration of what if. And we're just looking down the road and you're hearing some of the sausage making as we look to the future and try and continue to align your decision making and what goes before the voters eventually, and then as it goes on to implementation. So there's definitely due diligence that we need to continue to do with the state on this particular question. But we didn't want you to be surprised because we are checking into what-if scenarios of both with the state and then as Nick communicated with potentially self-funding for a time. And you'll be hearing more about both of these topics at a later date.
Other questions?
Just emphasize the communication, the importance of that to keep our partners informed, not just quietly doing the work, but making sure that our local reps and senators are in the loop and so they can, they can help out and just like Representative Bochar Davis, geez, is anything going on? Or what, are you guys sleeping over there? So it shows that it's not just, not just enough to do the work and keep chugging along, but make sure the wider community knows we're working on it. I look forward to more information about just what our options might be. And I guess my, my list is making sure that we get, we continue to be able to have the state matching dollars and then figure out the details around that.
Agreed. Agreed. We don't, don't want to jeopardize those matching funds in any way. That's the extent of my, my update today.
Okay, if there are no further questions for Nick or Alyssa, we will move on. Thank you much. We are now moving to the formal... Pardon? Go back.
Packers.
We're now moving on into the formal business meeting portion of our agenda. And the next item of business is the consent calendar, which contains two items, approval of the September 28, 2021 up for me and Ms., and an appointment to a home opportunity of planning an equity board. So I will entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Next up, we have proclamations. And we have two of those today. The first is in the matter of proclaiming November 2021 Native American Heritage Month in Benton County. And we have with us Johann, our Equity Leadership Inclusion Coordinator. And I believe that Louie is right there, is, was going to be with us also.
Yes, she wasn't sure exactly what time she's going to be here because of the schedule. So I asked her, I just messaged her to let her know. So if we can move to the next one, then I could be able to have her join in. It's just a second.
Okay. Well, if Brian and Molly are here, then we will move to the second proclamation, proclaiming November 11th, 2021 as Veterans Day. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. It was great to be here. I'm going to have Molly read the proclamation for you.
All right. Good morning. So before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon or the County of Benton, in the matter of proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day in Benton County, the United States Congress has provided that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a public holiday to honor veterans. With respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made, we urge all Americans to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans. And the officers at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments and residents of Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties have the deepest gratitude toward all veterans and honors the commitment and courage of the many people who have served in the armed forces. And the officers at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments particularly extend its heartfelt gratitude and goodwill to the Oregon National Guard members and the personnel of all armed services who are currently serving overseas and who have been mobilized locally to assist with the fight against COVID-19. These people have earned their respect and admiration of the grateful nation. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the officers at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments proclaim November 11th, 2021, as the day set aside for honoring our veterans and their families and withholding activities in observance of their contributions to our community, our state, and our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval of the proclamation?
I'll move to approve proclamation number 2021, day 022, proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day in Benton County.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Okay. And I wanted to acknowledge that, I think Molly, this is the first time you've joined us, and you are now, I believe, the lead for our Veterans Services Office through the Council of Governments?
Yes, yeah, I stepped into that position in September.
Well, congratulations and look forward to seeing you before us again. And also wanted to give anyone an opportunity if they are aware of the celebrations or observances of Veterans Day to share those with folks.
No.
Any events? Okay. Let's move on then. Thank you very much. We will go to item 6.1. Welcome, Luui and Johann.
First, I want to say good to see you, Molly. We went to school together, so it's nice to see you and work with you as a colleague now. So welcome, welcome to us, this group. And I am so excited to have Luui here with me so we can read the Native American Heritage And I am so excited to have Louie here with me so we can read the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. So we'll be alternating between paragraphs, and I will start. Since time immemorial, indigenous populations have lived in the Americas. Since 1986, there have been national recognition dates of Native American heritage. Jerry C. Elliott High, a Cherokee and Osage Indian, offered legislation in 1976 to observe what was called Native American Awareness Week. Over time, this observation expanded to the entire month of November and is now called Native American Heritage Month. Benton County joins the nation in many state and local jurisdictions in observing this important cultural month.
Benton County has been inhabited by a variety of indigenous communities. This includes but is not limited to Alsee and Kalapua people. These communities were harmed in the colonization of Oregon through forced removal, violent exposure to European diseases and assimilation of Native children in boarding schools. Today, descendants of these tribes primarily live in our communities and are members of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron or the Confederated Tribes of Celebs. Additionally, the State of Oregon has a government relationship with seven other tribal governments. We also have many indigenous people from other states and territories who have named Benton County their home.
As the original caretakers of this land, Native Americans such as Kalapua tribe cultivate the land and maintain a lush land value through practices such as controlled burns. Indigenous communities have over 175 languages in the United States and a vast variety of cultures, practices, traditions and experiences. Benton County is committed to further collaboration with the Federated Tribes of Grand Ron, the Federated Tribes of Celebs and the Kaku Manu Inahas, one of the cultural centers at Oregon State University, as well as many other organizations and individuals dedicated to service of indigenous communities.
We call upon settlers working, living and learning in Benton County to learn about the injustices enacted on indigenous people and about the cultures and experiences that make up the diverse indigenous communities in our area and country. We celebrate and encourage respectful appreciation of indigenous people and their cultures. We encourage everyone to continue to learn more about our shared history and foster stronger relationships to improve the lives of indigenous people throughout Benton County.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that November is Native American Heritage Month in Benton County, then all community members are encouraged to join in this service.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the proclamation?
I'll move to accept proclamation number 2021, day 021. Proclaiming November, 2021, Native American Heritage Month in Benton County.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and I'll ask you the same question. Are either of you aware of any particular celebrations or special observances that are coming up during the month of November that you'd like to share with us?
I would say that there's some great activities being hosted on campus in partnership with other areas on campus that are open to the public, that have virtual options available as well. So I would encourage folk to check out the OSU calendar for those events as well as social media pages. And there's also an overlap event for Heritage Month and Veterans Week as well that I thought you all would want to know about since you all just put that proclamation as well.
Thank you. This is April, we'll check it out. Okay, well, thanks for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to departmental reports and requests. First, item of business is a discussion and decision to approve order D 2021, 072, granting exceptions to Benton County Code Chapter 2 sole source to contract with Oregon Family Support Network. Danielle. Or Debbie, are you presenting?
Good morning, commissioners. My camera is being a little bit, okay, I'm sorry about that. My camera was not quite cooperating this morning. Thank you for allowing me some time to talk with you this morning. What we are asking for is a sole source exemption for a contract with Oregon Family Support Network that provides family peer support services for our children's family program. This is it to our children wraparound program and our crisis and transition services for youth experience and behavioral health crisis. There is language to provide family peer support services as part of those contracted services. Because this is a service we don't have a big role in, within county, and it's something that we've subcontracted out and have for several years. We have reviewed with Oregon Health Authority that Oregon Family Support Network is the only service provider in our local community for family peer support services. So I am requesting today an approval to do a sole source contract and not have to complete an RFP for the OSSN contract related to our wraparound and crisis and transition services for our children's health program.
Are there any questions for Danielle? Danielle, is this a contract that we have carried previously or was it with IHN CTO for a while?
It is a contract we have carried previously. So we've had this contract for five years, and that five-year term is now ending. And it's time to reevaluate that contract. So that's why we're bringing in support today for this sole source approval.
And will there be any other changes to that contract as we move forward?
We're renegotiating the terms of the contract in terms of the service provision. But the actual family care support services will remain the same under the contract language with Oregon Health Authority and IHN CTO.
Thank you. And Vance, do you have comments on this as a sole source contract?
I do, just want to just point out to the board that this is really the first sole source that's come to you under our new contract procedures. Previously, there's always been a bit of confusion as to what level of sole source contract. Does the board need to approve? Can the department have approved? We now made the cutoff at $100,000. This one is above that, hence your consideration of the sole source contract. So as we roll forward into most likely 2022, you're probably going to see a few of these. And it's because we have established that $100,000 threshold above which the board needs to. And Danielle has graciously offered to be the guinea pig in these situations.
I'm glad to take my turn.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, if not, I wouldn't make any motion.
I'll move to approve order number D 2021, day 072, granting exceptions to the Benton County Code, Chapter 2, to contract with Oregon Family Support Network.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you, Vance.
Okay, next up is Gary Stockhoff. And I'm not sure whether you're accompanied by Lisa and Brad this morning. Lisa, I see it here, and Brad. Discussing an order to approve the statewide transportation improvement fund advisory committee project recommendations for Benton area transit.
Thank you, commissioners, good morning, all. Gary Stockhoff, Public Works. This is a request to approve a couple of projects that have come through from the STIF committee. And I could probably try to explain it, but the pros are online with us. And so I'll defer to Lisa and Brad, and they'll do just a quick explanation of that. And then we would request approval of the order adopting those or recommending those projects.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to let Brad do this.
Awesome. Good morning, commissioners, good morning, everybody. For those of you who don't know, Benton County is the qualified entity for the statewide transportation improvement fund, which means that money from that fund flows through Benton County and then is dispersed by the STIF Advisory Committee and the Board of Commissioners to local transit providers that do business in the Benton County area. We submitted back in January a STIF plan to the state. And once they're submitted STIF plans, which include a bunch of projects in the region, once they're submitted to the state, they cannot really be amended. So part of our STIF plan, we included a project called the Unanticipated Projects of Regional Significance. For short, we call it the UPRS or the Uppers. And this project is basically a reserve project for all the local providers here in Benton County to use if there are ever, if there are unforeseen or unbudgeted issues, projects or opportunities that show up. Initially, in January, when we started submitting our STIF project, we initially budgeted for the Uppers project to have $2.9 million, which is made up of basically the unspent funds from the previous STIF cycle. And at this time, because of the rollout of the vaccines and the uptick in ridership and the ability for Albany Transit and Benton Area Transit to be able to purchase vehicles, we ended, ended the STIF cycle with a reserve of $2.1 million. So the reason we are here is for two potential projects to be funded with the Uppers project. The first of which is the Philomis Connection to go fareless. The Philomis Connection went fareless due to the pandemic and the community of Philomis has been now seeking opportunity to make it fareless each STIF biennium. And then the second project is for Benton County's transit system, Benton Area Transit, to receive an upgrade to its dispatch software. Currently, the current dispatch software is about 10 years old, maybe a little more. And this project was on the STIF cycle, on the previous STIF cycle, but was not funded basically due to time constraints. Yeah. Lisa, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's, that's very well stated.
Any questions?
Thank you, Brad and Lisa. Are there questions for either Brad or Lisa about these two projects? Joe?
Brad, the question I have for you is I'm making the assumption that the dispatch software that's being proposed to the board today, I'm making the assumption that that software is still, it's a good investment long-term and it's not dependent on any type of contractor that we have a relationship with. It's a standalone investment in our dispatch system, I guess is what I'm just wanting to clarify.
Correct, correct. So the dispatch software upgrade, it's the county software. The contractor is the one who uses it. But yes, it is not dependent on a specific contractor.
Hey Brad, is this the one that we're working with the COG on in a group effort?
Correct, correct. So the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments is also seeking a dispatch software for their non-emergency transportation service. And so we're teaming up to see if we can get more interest and more vendors to get the right product.
I'm glad to hear that. Should, should give us some more buying power and leverage. And it only makes sense given that there's overlap in some of the clientele that have common dispatch software. That's the full, go ahead, Lisa.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to chime in. We, we, kind of the thought to do this with them came out of our, another project that we did with them in the earlier STIF cycle that just went really well, involved a lot of providers. And the COG managed the project and we thought, you know, they want a dispatch system, we want one. Let's, let's join our forces together. So it's a second opportunity for us to do something like this.
Great. I, I think it's a good thing. I was wondering, with the Philomis Connection, did the farelessness during COVID increase ridership at all? There were so many inbounded factors with COVID, but have they, so that's been a positive experience?
You know, that's a good question, Commissioner Ojero. I, I don't have an answer for that. I, I, it would be easy to find, but I didn't come with that answer. What we can tell you, well, can we separate it, Brad? We do have the data for the 99 Express service to their village that was made fareless also during COVID, kind of because of COVID and, and maybe, but it's a little hard to separate out. How did the vaccine bring service back? How did fareless bring, but do you want to say anything about that, Brad?
I, kind of like you, I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, but the farelessness has, has helped the service. It's, the ridership is almost consistently as high as it was pre-pandemic, which is pretty great. Yeah, and so it just kind of, it makes me excited because, you know, if, if we get to a point where, you know, we're pre-pandemic as a whole, then, you know, even higher. So I, yeah, I'm a, I'm a fan of what fareless has done to the 99 Express.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that it has, just if I extrapolate from the experience of CTS, which was fareless before, so we can kind of eliminate that as a variable. CTS ridership is not back to its pre-pandemic level. So I don't think the 99 Express service would be at its pre-pandemic level if it wasn't fareless. So I think that's a whole different. And I'll bet it has for the Philomis Connection as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Lisa or Brad? Okay.
No questions, I have a statement.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
I have just excellent news from throughout the country about fareless options being a really great way to help create some more equitable situations for people. So I approve and recommend that we continue this fareless option. I think it's a great way to make our communities more accessible for everyone.
And my final comment is just that it's, the funding source coming from the state was created with a very specific lens for lower income populations. And so fareless projects just fit right into that vision for the money.
Okay, Pusha Malone, did you have a motion?
The comment first, I really liked the collaboration with, with the COG and having a regional approach to our transit systems and the fareless approach, I think, just will help the whole, the whole system. But with that said, I'll make a motion to approve order number D 2021, day 074, accepting projects recommended by the Benton County STIF Advisory Committee to be funded using the Unanticipated Projects of Regional Significance project from the Benton County STIF plan.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to have you all come and talk to us. So we can keep up to date with what's going on with our Benton Area Transit and other regional projects of significance. Thank you, commissioner.
Thank you.
Joe?
Commissioners, before you move on to other topics and our executive sessions, I would like to swing back to our COVID update from earlier this morning to just reach you on a particular topic related to that.
Please.
Okay, what I wanted to do is just to update the board. As you know, I continue to work with our county executive committee, who is focused on the county's internal COVID response and management of our policies relative to our on the county's internal COVID response and management of our policies relative to our organization. As you are aware, the Delta variant really began to impact our county earlier in August of this year. At that time, we made a decision to close county facilities to public access and to ask residents to pursue services via online methods that we provide and are over the phone. And in some cases, we would make individual appointments if people did need to come into our facilities. With that being said, we've continued to operate within that framework since August. The executive committee met recently to kind of review where we're at. We've been in close contact with April Holland within our Health Department, as well as Suzanne Hoffman. And as you heard this morning, we continue in Benton County to struggle with the number of cases that we're experiencing within the county community. And as a result of that, the executive committee feels that we need to continue to stay the course with keeping our facilities closed to public access at this point. However, of course, with our community health centers, as well as the sheriff's office and several other areas, we continue to have members of the public coming in. But for the most part, most of our facilities will continue to remain closed to the public, at least through the end of the year. And I would just like to get any feedback or questions that the board may have on that position of the executive committee, if you are uncomfortable with continuing to maintain our current operations as we are, please make me aware of that. Otherwise, we plan to revisit this topic as the executive committee middle of December to try and get an idea if we should be opening up right after the first of the year or not. So I just wanted to provide that quick brief to you and ask for any concerns or ideas or questions.
Questions?
Yeah, with the report from April earlier this meeting, in this meeting, I think that makes sense. We have a high case level that will continue, maybe tapering off towards the end of the year. But, so I think that makes sense to align our kind of limited public access to buildings with the current local case count and especially going into the winter. And like the OSU folks were talking about, there's, there's other illnesses out there besides COVID. And I think just doing our part to keep our community safe makes sense. And revisit the question towards the end of the year when we have more information and maybe we'll hear today about getting, being able to vaccinate five to 11-year-olds and so get that segment of the population vaccinated. So I think the executive committee is on the right track.
Any comments, Nancy?
Yeah, I think I agree. We're, we got to just keep to the path that we're on now and see if we can reassess if and when things start to change.
Just same comment I had for the OSU folks is we've got something in place. It's, seems to be working. And I think the worst thing we can do is open up and then say, oh, that's not working. And then a few weeks later, now we're closed. And I, I hope our, the community knows kind of what our situation is and keep it consistent till there's a good reason to change.
Thanks. Yeah, I have spoken to Joe a little bit about this. We haven't received much, in any way of any complaints about our current mode of operation. So given that, and given the holidays and cold weather and Delta presence, I agree, this is a good approach and will reevaluate in December.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your feedback.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item seven point three, and Debbie has been so patient to take up the issue of approving order D 2021-75 authorizing payment of property taxes to certain municipalities that is taxing districts.
Good morning. This is something that we do every year where we buy out the small districts that are under $13,000. And it looks like we had about 17 that we are planning on buying out and then, and we will advance them, their money is ahead of all of it that's coming in, because some of them are like $200. So we didn't want to extend out that $200 to each district. So that's, that's what we're doing. I don't know if I need to go further. I, this is the first time I've presented it, so. So if there's any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
My understanding is also that this is just a way to keep some of the smaller districts afloat and keep them liquid, providing funds as soon as the tax collection is gone out. So I'm grateful that we're able to do this for some of our smaller municipalities and service districts.
It is nice for them, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve order number D 2021 dash zero seven five authorizing the payment of property taxes to certain municipalities and other taxing districts as detailed in the attachment to the order.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our regular business meeting. We will now move into other portion of our agenda, which contains executive sessions. We will begin with executive session with respect to real estate under 192.6602E as in Edward. And we will remain in executive session transitioning to topics under ORS 192.6602D as in David and 192.6602H as in Herbert. And then we'll come out of those executive sessions and then end our meeting. So with that, I see that Nancy has already left for a moment, but we need to clear our main meeting room. Thank you, John and team. And we will hopefully be back to begin that executive session at about 11:45, not soon.